I spoke with Kathy Chandler Henry, the Eagle County Commissioner, and she is also going to be at CC's tomorrow, possibly Ryan Mahoney, sometimes the chief is there, so please come over if you want to. I also see that there is a community celebration, this is a long time off, but I guess I'll say it anyway, July 3rd, the Basalt Heritage Society, looks like it's just a community celebration, but there are free hot dogs, so that's important, and I'll probably say that again before July 3rd comes. Okay, did I miss anything, Pammy? Okay. Our first agenda item is the consent agenda. Are there any questions? Does anybody want to pull anything off, or is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that the town council approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi, opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Okey doke, do you want to say why, or?
Because of SCICO thing is on there.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you, Auden. The next item is comments from the public for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Three minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Carol Hawke, I live in Willets. I'm a community member on the Eagle County Mental Health Advisory Committee, and I've been trying to get some press over here as to what they've been doing with the marijuana tax. It hasn't happened yet, but I'm hoping it's going to, so I thought I'd just give you a little update. At the beginning of the marijuana tax, the Eagle County Commissioners committed half a million dollars to put school-based mental health counselors in our high schools. So Basalt High School got one last year. Things, other things that have been funded to date, they're actually bringing the Hope Center over to the Vale Valley, which is pretty exciting. They're really excited about having what we have here now over there. They've also brought bilingual therapists to Valley Settlement here in Elderbell, and let's see what else. And we've got the Buddy Program, also received some funding. Mine Springs got some money, which affects both sides of the valley, the whole mountain area, as well as jail-based counselors in the Eagle County Jail. And at our last meeting last week, we actually tabled a few things, but we did move forward with funding a full-time mental health counselor for Basalt Middle School next year. So I just want to give you the update.
Nice, that's awesome.
Thanks, Carol.
Yeah, it's all good stuff.
Thank you.
Oh, and I forgot to ask for the formal reading of the introduction by Jennifer Riffle, please.
Can I add a line to it? Basalt is an inclusive, sustainable mountain community that boasts both historic charm and progressive vision. It is an engaging place to live, work, and play while offering an abundance of creative, professional, educational, and recreational outlets, whereas a majority of people drive down the middle of the street.
I like that.
It's just an interesting one. People tend to not view or stay within the lanes.
I would be one of those.
Yeah.
Was there anybody else that wanted to make comments that, for items that are not on the agenda?
Hi, Michael Kerr here. So CPW concluded their committee meeting a few days ago, and I just wanted to comment a couple of things about it, now that that dog and pony show is, at least that part of it's over. CPW is up to what they always do, their propaganda, lies, and misrepresentation. Let's be clear about this. In the minutes of 2010 meetings of the committees for the shooting range, CPW confirmed that there were cameras, operational cameras, at the range. I've got a copy of an email that, from Perry Will, and we all know, there are no cameras, operational cameras. So they lied to the committee and the town, and pretty much everybody, that they had done certain things up there. So, just want to be clear about where they're coming from. They will continue to do that. In my mind, they're not a friend at all. They're in fact an enemy. And the other thing is that we're actually putting town funds to fund the operation of that range, I think it's, I think it's criminal. Absolutely criminal. And they treat us like they treat us, and we give them money to help them. I mean, come on. So anyways, I'm going to read an email from Mike Luciano, he couldn't be here. "CPW has concluded the range will be open. Debate is over. Any concerns local officials may have had regarding the perception of taking sides or personal bias has been eliminated. Now the residents of the affected area are in desperate need for our town leaders to implore CPW to become a good neighbor." Well, and actions speak louder than words. "CPW actions to increase hours of operation by 18 hours over the weekend in the summer speaks volumes. Despite their claims of trying to be sensitive to local residents concerned about noise, their actions say the exact opposite. Residents of the affected area are asking for reasonable compromise of hours of operation. We need our town to insist on hours not be increased and a dialogue between the affected residents, town officials, and CPW is established ASAP." Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Chris, did you have something?
Yep. Hi, Chris Mataro, Basalt Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to provide council with several updates, and I can go into greater detail at a later date, but it's public comment, and I've got three minutes. So our Basalt Summer Concert Series, which is in partnership with the Town of Basalt, kicks off next week on June 19th. Everything is listed on our brand-new website, which is one of our announcements. So it kicks off with Dirty Revival in Triangle Park in Willets, and Katie NK will actually be doing a live broadcast of the event. There will be a second one at the end of the series.
And what, what date is that?
That is next Wednesday, the 19th. You will hear me on air promoting it, starting next week. So we're very excited about it. We will have three concerts in Willets, and four concerts here in downtown. And it's quite the lineup. We are doing it in partnership with Takaw, so they are producing partners, and they have gotten us a great set of bands for that. So it's very exciting, and from people who are music enthusiasts have heard it's probably the best lineup in the valley this summer. So we beat out Snowmass on that one in Glenwood.
You can repeat that if you want, your opinion.
Best music here in Basalt.
Right here.
So the runs through August 14th, which will end with the annual Starwood Reunion Concert, and we will have one variation of our standard Wednesday night series, and that will be a street dance party on Market Street, which was in the consent agenda, on July 12th. And that will be a awesome reggae band out of Telly Ride. So that's exciting. Other events coming up, on July 20th, we will have a revival of an event started by a town councilman, Pete McBride of Basalsa, will be coming back. So we're working very hard on bringing that event here to Midland Spur. We saw the success that happened with Coco, particularly with the fire, and how diverse of a community came out that night to watch the movie, and we wanted to build upon that, so we're bringing Basalsa back. Also, we have National Night Out coming up on August 6th, and we'll be partnering with Basalt Police and a fire on that as well. And finally, a couple of Office of Economic Development updates with our two Blueprint 2.0 grants that we received. The branding grant is in its final stages. We're working with the marketing and communications team at O Edit to do a new logo design, and we've reached out to various members of the community on some feedback on that. Hopefully, we'll get our first round next week. Our coworking grant is pretty much wrapped up at this point, and actually, O Edit's seeing the focus on the brain capital we have here on the Western Slope. So the first ever West Slope Startup Week happened last week in Grand Junction, and it was really well-attended, and I swear, like, there was no one left in the Roaring Fork Valley tied to entrepreneurship. They were all in Junction last week. And along those lines, as we're satisfying that coworking grant, we have signed a lease on a new office space that will be part chamber office and part coworking space, so that we can help support our small businesses. Okay. I'm out of time, but-
Initiate your sentence.
We saw a lot of the feedback with the master plan, listening sessions, and we see the section under work, particularly small business support, and we want to partner with the town, the county, and the state to make sure that that is happening here in Basalt.
When will you be in your new space?
We're working on that, but hopefully-
Describe it.
Eh, month. We got internet and phones installed, finally, so we're getting there. We do have meetings there occasionally.
Excellent.
So I should be moving in soon as I can get my stuff over there.
Hey, Chris, you sent an email saying, "Do you like this one, this one, or this one?", and I responded late. Is that process for the, whatever it is, motto, town motto, that's done?
But we have the tagline, "O Edit will be coming down to do a big community reveal" for that. So, we have the tagline, the next step's the logo, and move forward from there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I can comment briefly, Chris sent over a number of logos that were from a bunch of different places, where they're asking different folks to comment on the logos, the color, the style, things of that nature. And so I just, this afternoon, started looking at it and making some comments, so I'll circulate that. They want it back pretty quickly, probably, I said by the end of the week. I know they probably want it sooner than that. So I'll try to get it out, perhaps tomorrow, to you all, so you can kind of see what the comments are, and if you have anything else to add, by all means.
No, just for curiosity's sake, are these town logos, or are these chamber logos?
Uh, do you want, it's not specifically a town logo.
The way, the way we've clarified it with the Office of Economic Development is we are looking for, the goal of the logo is to be more tourism and economic development-focused. So the way I've explained it to them is Aspen has the Defy Ordinary that their chamber has taken on, but they are also a chamber resort association. So there would be an overarching Basalt brand with a new tagline that would be used more externally focused, but hopefully install some sense of local pride. There would still be the municipal logo potentially, or if you guys like it, you can adopt it. And then the chamber would be using that to influence our future logo, because our current logo only represents a portion of our membership and a portion of this town. So.
Look in big picture. Anybody else have questions for Chris, since we got her?
You can come back.
You can come back, and please do. Every time we have a meeting, we want you here. I don't want to blindside you, Chief, but I've been seeing some good posts on Facebook about upcoming flooding and things like that. Do you have anything you want to say on nationwide television, while you have the opportunity?
No, so there's been a big concerted effort to get as much information as we can out on social media pages. So Police Department, Town, Fire Departments, Police Departments, Picking County Emergency Management, Eagle County Emergency Management is all pushing the exact same information, so it's consistent. And so people have information that if they have a question about how to build a go-kit, or how to shelter in place, you can go to the social media pages, and there's a lot of information. And then updated information on possible debris flows, mud and flood, flooding in the rivers, is being pushed out through the IMT, the Incident Management Team that we stood up earlier this spring. So that's, that's kind of what you're seeing. And if anyone has questions, feel free to contact any of the agencies that are doing this. And if, if they live, like, an example, last night, we had the gathering for the Lake Christine Burns car, and there was a lot of Garfield County residents that attended that one with questions. So if, if we don't know the answer, we can get you in contact with a representative of an agency or organization that does have that answer.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, Mayor and Council reports and comments.
I think we have other citizens.
Oh, do it, come on up, come on up. Thank you, good catch.
I can't figure for the next meeting, so I wanted to just re-complain again.
That's fine.
About the, my name's John Locke, I live across from the proposed dormitory, of SCICO's proposed dormitory. And there's only really three things that I just want to mention tonight, is the dormitory, the deed restrictions, and parking. And the dormitory, what more can I say about it? You're either, if you, you're either for it or against it. If you live close to it, like I do, you're against it, because I went to college in a dormitory. I know what goes on in those things, and I know the noise that goes with it, and so on. But people that don't live there, that are going to vote on this, you know, it's not going to mean much to them. But deed restrictions are something that I would like to know a little bit more about, and I would think that the board there, the council would too. The second meeting that they had about this, I met two young ladies that were healthcare workers, and they were really excited about this building going in. They were going to have first choice on these. They were healthcare workers, and they thought that was great, and it sounded great. So I talked to them a little bit afterwards, and they said, and I said, "Man, that does sound good for you." I said, "Now, what is the rate cap going to be?" And she said, "Oh, we don't know." And I said, "Well, have, yeah, we've asked them, but they won't tell us." And, well, what good's a rate cap? What's good having first choice? What's a good, good is it going to do those young ladies to have first choice if they don't know what the rate cap is going to be, what the deed restriction would be on that? And they said, "Well, SCICO wouldn't tell them." They said they'd tell them when that was, after it had been passed. And so that's like, you know, saying, "I have, I have first choice to buy a Rolls-Royce." That's not going to help me. I can't buy a Rolls-Royce. And if that deed, if that rent cap is thought, is capped so high for them, they can't afford it, well, that doesn't, being first choice, having first choice to get them, doesn't mean anything. And I noticed the last time, there was actually a vote on, on that. It didn't, it was two and two, and I guess it went by the wayside, and it's going to be voted on later on. But does the board know what the deed restrictions are? And how can you vote on, I think anybody here, if I buy a house, I want to know what the deed restrictions are. And I don't know, does anybody here know what the deed restrictions are before you vote for this, vote for this in? And from what I understood, researched it and tried to find out a little bit, that no, SCICO's going to set those deed restrictions, but it's going to be after it's approved. That's kind of like buying a pig in a poke, isn't it? You know, you don't know what you're getting. You're voting it in, but you don't know what the deed restrictions are, so you have no, no, who knows? And then the last thing, because it's a short time, it's the parking. And they say that, you know, they just can't possibly afford to have underground parking. So I went over to 10101, and over across the street from this, where this is going to be built, and got their brochure. They have underground parking, by the way. They're not going to get as much per square foot for their housing as, as SCICO's going to get, but for some reason, they can afford underground parking. And I, if they can, I don't know why SCICO can't afford to put underground parking there. And then the other thing I'd like to mention on the parking was, you know, the proposal that they gave to us, parking is already, for us residents of the Willets there, parking is already a problem. And to, for us to, they proposed that Willets, or the Town of Basalt, sell us, sell them some of our parking spots. That just seems absurd, to aggravate a situation that's already not very tenable. But that was all I had to say this time. I can't be here for the other time, and there's quite a few people out there that feel the same way I do. That I think most of them are just throwing up their hands and said, "Well, they're just going to, that the board is just going to, council just cave to Kiasko anyway, no matter what." And, but, I sure don't think you ought to approve something if you don't know what the deed restrictions are. You, none of you here would buy a house without knowing what the deed restrictions are. I certainly wouldn't. So, that's all.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else I missed that wants to speak? Okay, hearing none. Now, Council and Mayor reports and comments. Anybody?
Hi, Katie.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to hand out a staff MVP award to Watkins Folk Gray. First of all, for winning the Basalt Half Marathon.
Winning?
Yes, the best division. Congratulations. And, get ready for another round of applause. The icing on the cake is he translated the entire master plan survey into Spanish. And that is quite an accomplishment. Yes, and, yes, and the entire website, so recognize you.
Is that all?
I don't know, what else can you add to it, Watkins?
You're every day.
And he has a great attendance record.
And he's getting his eyes fixed soon. Thank you very much. I know you've been doing, I've seen you in the Building Officials' Office, too, wearing that hat for quite a while, till we got somebody in there, so you're this strong, silent type. Apparently, somebody has to say how great you are, though. So thank you so much. Yeah. Well, nobody could beat that one, but go ahead and try if you want. And I don't, I don't have anything, yes, Bill?
I just had a question to follow up on Mike's comments, and I had intended to ask about kind of any updates that we might receive from CPW, and kind of the conclusions, because reading about them in the paper the other day, I was actually a little bit surprised that they've kind of adopted a seven-day, 12-hours-a-day policy, when that was part of what we had asked very specifically, that they curtail. It did look like they, they came a long distance in a number of other regards, however, so I, I want to salute them on agreeing to place an officer there, which it sounds like they're in finance, but I'd like to confirm that. And then also some of the other safeguards, the cameras and other things. I think we do want to, you know, just make sure that we know what is, what the outcome will be. But one thing I didn't see was any comment on the lead survey, that a number of citizens had, had requested in the early stages of our conversations on the gun range. And so curious what we're going to do with that. Ryan, you and I had spoken about the water quality monitoring that we do do independently, and so that may satisfy the request for a lead survey, but if it does, I'd simply like to publicize that, so we can, at least in good faith, present to our community that we are conscious that lead is an issue, but based on our existing water quality monitoring, we don't see any evidence of lead in ground or surface water, something like that.
Yeah. So I came prepared, because I figured after that meeting, this was the first time that we would be able to speak, and I could get any direction from the council on commenting on the, on the meeting. So to start with, in case anybody here has not seen it, the presentation, the PowerPoint they did that night, I got a copy, and we put it up on our website. So for sake of the public to watching, if they would like to, to look at that, that's a good place to kind of see everything consolidated.
Where on our website is it?
Front and center, right, right, right there. Yeah, can't miss it. Yeah, sure. And Bill, as it relates to your question on the environmental assessment, they did have that in here, and there was a, if I can find it briefly, environmental assessment, so flood concerns, flows directly through the range. They did not, they did not mention in the PowerPoint, oh, soils testing, so there it is. And then their, their, that's under their long term, but it, that's a little bit of a misnomer. I believe they had 19 and 20 on there, that they would be working on, 2019 later in the year, that they would be working on that environmental assessment. So, so that's, that sounds like it's forthcoming. As it relates to the funding, it does appear that they've received funding for the, the range officers and such. You know, they did, you know, we, we put $5,000 in our budget for this year to help with-
$50,000.
$5,000 for a range officer, specifically. There is also $50,000 in there for other improvements, to help with some of the short-term improvements. And so that $5,000, you know, they would, they would ask for that as part of the range officer program, but the cost is going to far exceed $5,000. And, you know, they do plan in the short term on putting up some of the cameras, and doing some of the fire mitigation, creating a ring of, of, you know, green space around. And I think that the, the timing, like, the, the operating hours, they did come with three different sort of seasons. You know, the winter season is where they had the most reduced hours, but the summer season was the, was the highest use, which was seven days a week. You know, I think from, from our standpoint, prior, when we adopted the resolution, you know, we had asked for reduced hours, which they complied with. Come to find out, some of the confusion is, I guess they have existing contracts with private purveyors that can take people up there to shoot, and those contracts allow them to shoot seven days a week. The same goes for the, the Gun Club, the Sportsman's Club. And, and so, you know, I think those, these are, keep in mind, proposals from the Citizen Committee, that then have to go through either local or their local folks, if they have the authority to implement things, or to the, to the regional, to the commission ultimately to chew on. So, you know, I think there's, there's not a, a lost opportunity for council to deliver, you know, their thoughts on, on the range, and sort of what, what the short and long term suggestions were, so. But, you know, either we could talk about that tonight, or, you know, I could, we could bring it back, or you, if you, if you all had a chance to review the PowerPoint and had some comments, we did have a couple of councilors there, so if you had any comments to add.
I would love to hear from Jen and Katie, since they were there.
Yeah.
So, one thing that I want to put out there to all citizens and to us councilors, if you do want to make comments directly to CPW, they do have a survey that is available online through June 20th. They will then close the survey, but this is where you do directly submit your comments that will go to the commission.
Okay, can I stop you right there?
Yeah.
Is it possible to link that to the town website? Get it to me, and I'll get it out.
Okay. I'll give the address right now.
And also maybe on the town Facebook page, just to let it be a little bit more broadly known, because that's a pretty short timeframe, and I don't know how anyone would know.
So if you want to do it right now, go to cpw.state.co.us, search Shooting Ranges, and under Shooting Ranges, there's a survey available to provide comments.
Maybe we can find that link and just-
That would be great.
Yeah. Let's make it easy. I would potentially, I would ask CPW to extend that deadline, because, I mean, I never even heard about a survey. I mean, it's, it's really not fair. I know if you put it out there, it'll be loaded up by a ton of out-of-person, but it would be great if they had some demographic information on that survey, so you can see where people are commenting from, and, and really put it out there, so, you know, people can actually, because I never heard of it, and I never talked to anyone about, there's a survey there.
Good idea.
Yes.
Thanks, June.
And then some interesting citizens' questions, so after, you can read the, the presentation, the PowerPoint. But what I found more interesting were the citizen questions, and then the citizen committee responses, along with Matt Yamashita, who's our local CPW Ranger, and then his supervisor, I blanked what his name is.
I don't remember him, because I didn't know him.
But it wasn't a speaking questions, you had to write your questions down, and then they would answer them. And so some of the questions were, "Has there been a consideration for charging a fee for day use?" They said, they responded, CPW responded, that that was not beyond a hard ask, that there are other ranges where they do charge a fee, but there was concern that a fee may turn people away, and they may go shoot in the forest. Another response was, "What about consistent rules between all the CPW sites?" And CPW responded, "Each of them is a different animal, so we can't have the same rules across the board." But what did occur at the Basalt Shooting Range is greatly influenced- But what did occur at the Basalt Shooting Range is greatly influencing all of their locations. As well, the regional manager will rule on the schedule of when the shooting range is open. So know that your comment should be to the regional manager for that. The commission drives the, the citizen task suggestions, and the updates would start to be considered in December of twenty, this year, 2019. And they will meet three times. And this general commission, it's like the larger, the Colorado State CPW Commission, they will then decide on what the suggestions were.
And on that, could we find out the meeting that they will?
Right.
Because one of the best ways to actually influence the Colorado Wildlife Commission is to actually go to their meetings.
Yeah.
Because our local representative hadn't had a long conversation with him, and he goes, you'd be amazed at how few people show up, but every interest group shows up. So honestly, that's a big deal. And I know the next one's July 18th in Telluride. But, so, anyway, if that's going to be on that agenda.
We could rent a Raptor bus.
Right. Well, if it's going to be on the agenda, it'd be great to get information out there in case people were concerned enough that they wanted to go there too, voice their kind of sound.
Great. Thanks, Gary.
Sorry to chime in.
Oh, no, that's great. And then there was a question, is there, this was my question that they answered, is there consistency within fire restrictions? If our local fire department design, designates that it's a stage one or a stage two, will the shooting range shut down? Or will there be, and so their response was, we will have more communication, and that there will be better communication between the town manager, Matt Yamashita, and the fire department. They're going to strive for that. But there is no rules, or they don't have to follow any sort of protocol for that. And then, another question that I asked, they designated that there were two or three, there were three possible relocation sites, and they're all old gravel pits. And they said, but it was cost prohibitive. And I asked, well, what's the cost? And so, the cost of an indoor range is eight million plus maintenance. And then the site, so that would be if it were on the site here, and then if they were to purchase another location, a gravel pit, one of the bits, or one of, just in conversations, it was between eight and nine million dollars just to get the land, and that's not to develop the shooting range. And then the added cost on top of that would then be to reclaim the Basalt site, and that would be another three to six million dollars in getting it back to environmental.
Huh.
Yeah.
That seems way high.
Yeah.
I do this all the time. That's an enormous number.
And the range safety officers will not be there. They're going to start in July of each year, and that was one of my comments, is our, our drought season can start in June. We were in stage one fire restrictions, June of last year. And so, I feel strongly that there should be a range safety officer. And then, they said that they do have funding. It's promising for long-term supervision and video, that they do have that within their own budget. And that's, that was, that was it.
Very good reporting, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Really good. Do you have anything to add?
Sure. I'll just mention the things that really jumped out to me. There were some really positive things, like Jen was mentioning, the, having someone on site, and some other things. But the non-ideal things that jumped out at me are the extended hours, 12 hours a day, seven days a week, is pretty excessive. The other thing was, they're working on signs so that people are clear about what they can and cannot do up there. But for some bureaucratic reason, the signs cannot be placed until 2020. Which just is absolutely stunning, that we can't inform people what they can and cannot do at the site. So somehow expediting that needs to happen. The other thing that really jumped out at me is that there's contemplation of creating a world-class gun range up there, making it a destination. As a resident, I don't feel comfortable augmenting and creating a destination where, instead of having 10,000 visits, we could have 50,000 visits. So that, that was something that really jumped out at me, was, I thought we were trying to rein this in, not massively expand the use of this gun range. So, waiting until December, I mean, I know this is a bureaucratic process. It's just such a lengthy process to make any real progress on some of these items. But with the extended hours, I'm assuming they're starting them ASAP. Does that, is that your understanding, or are they going to keep?
I don't know. I wasn't clear on that.
Okay. It's just.
I only picked up that they were going to have the range safety officer start in July because their budget is a June to June.
Yeah.
And so they don't have the funds right now. So no, that wasn't, there was no concrete.
Um, this is probably, and aside from that meeting, but is, was Eagle County there? And are they participating financially in, are they matching with our funds or anybody's funds, since this is in the county?
I'm not sure. Eagle County, the, the undersheriff was there. I don't recall. Did you see any other staff?
I didn't see.
I don't remember seeing other staff there.
Well, maybe we, the town, could just follow up on that and see, just point-blank, maybe in writing even, can you help with the funding of some of these things? Because it might help move it up, some of these things, because.
I mean, the signs should happen now, like order it.
Yeah, you could probably do some temporary signs, and I think the range manager will help with, you know, overseeing that. My understanding is they have a contract with a sign company, and they have, they, they have to use that sign company, and they put in their order, and they only get them once a year. It must be a budgetary thing, too. So, I mean, I picked up on that bureaucratic sort of process as well.
And the language had to be approved by the commission.
Yes.
They had a sign committee and.
So, we can find out more.
Yeah.
Anything else, Kate?
No, those were the, the big ones that really jumped out.
And you think council wants to include in this, send forward messages to anybody?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should offer comments now on this, you know, latest iteration. To me, you know, we had the whole winter to think about this. We expressed the desire to pursue relocation, to say, oh, it's too expensive, I don't buy it. I think there should be an ongoing and maybe permanent effort to relocate it. Because if, if we don't do it, the next council's going to have to. It's, it's in, it's pretty close to town. So, I, I support the range, it's good to have it there. I know tons of friends of mine use it. But let's keep looking. One, and two, okay, if it's eight million dollars for an indoor range, and that's the only option, let's start fundraising. You know, that's not an insurmountable cost for a world-class range. That would eliminate fire danger, eliminate sound. So let's not be, you know, deterred by that number. So I would like for us to come to some consensus comments and share them. I think we could also have comments on hours of operation. Because that seems, it seems almost like now it's back, you know, back open. If their contracts are the reason, why could you close it before?
Right.
So, again, I, I think we can keep being progressive on this. I have another comment semi-tied to this, which is, Lake Christine, adjacent to this, is both, as I've said before, this incredible asset for the community. You can go there with your kid and catch little sunfish and their bass in there. But it's a pit. It's covered in thistle. And I know part of this is that the dam doesn't work, and, but as we've discussed before, I'd love to see us start looking, helping them, you know, figuring out how to improve that area. It could be beautiful. It's amazing. And, you know, while you're there, you hear the, the shooting constantly, so an indoor range would help mitigate that. If the cost of land is too much, that might be the place to do it. So I, I said, let's not stop, let's keep going. And we're also getting comments from citizens about noise and concern there. So that, this should be an ongoing issue for us.
Can I make one more quick comment?
Yeah, sure.
Just to clarify, the indoor shooting range would only be for rifles and handguns, and that they would continue to have an outdoor skeet shooting. And so, and skeet is one-third of what occurs, so the sound would reduce by two-thirds, but there still would be.
But that's a separate deal anyway, right? That we can't necessarily control that skeet, private skeet range.
So, following up on what Aden is saying, Ryan?
It's public, but they have a private club.
Right, private club. It's public, it's on public land.
Right.
Right, well, and, and, and again, sorry, Jackie. We don't control any of this.
No.
Of course.
But, it, what I'm hearing is, it seems like it might be a good idea for you to take these comments, concerns, et cetera, and maybe put together a bulleted list of our concerns, so that we can send them to them formally, in, like Aden says, in consensus. And make, you know, let's get the meeting date on our calendars and, you know, see how many people we can get to.
I can find out some more information around that.
Telluride's not a horrible place to go visit.
They won't be able to make the decision that quickly, as, so it wouldn't be the Telluride one.
Okay. Well, whenever.
I'll, I'll talk to them and see when, when that is, and I'll bring it back to you guys.
But I'd only suggest that we probably do want to have our comments prepared for the Telluride meeting to get this in front of CPW, if there's only one meeting a year. And the comment that I am very enthusiastic to see embraced, is a comment that would much more strictly enforce closure when some designation of fire hazard has been pronounced. The notion that Ken and Scott will simply talk isn't conclusive enough. If it's stage one, something should happen. If it's stage two, something more dramatic should happen. And I realize this is a state-level issue that'll probably go up to DNR, but we need to start raising the issue somewhere. And so, starting with CPW is probably the place to.
Great.
To push it forward.
Last question. It's the CPW, on the Wildlife Commission, I think they meet almost monthly. So, it could be August, it could be September. But I agree with the fact that we want to get comments into the Wildlife Commission, just to have them be aware of it. And I, I personally agree with Aden on the fact that, you know, an indoor shooting range is not a bad option.
It's not.
It would be, you know, it would create an incredible resource for shooting, and it would actually, then I wouldn't mind seeing the increase in the amount of use, because then it's a contained facility and stuff like that. But I also worry about how many people we're bringing up there, because it's not, you know, it goes through kind of where the wilds go through, and so, don't necessarily want to see an increase in traffic, too.
And also, the one other thing I want to say is, when we put our letter together with comments on it, I mean, this was not noticed, this conversation, because it came up as comments out on the agenda or council. So, nobody had an opportunity to come and weigh in on this subject. So if we could have this same conversation again, only have it as an agenda item, a placeholder, so people know that we're talking about this, it would be more fair.
Yep.
Okay. So, are we ready for?
Managers' report?
Oh, jeez, are we just not getting that right?
Well, I don't know.
You've been reporting all along.
I know. I've got, I've got a long managers' report, too, so. But is everybody done? Okay, so, I'm going to try to get through these without fumbling too much.
Should we set the timer?
Oh, yes. Now, that, you should. Okay, so I have a couple, this is sort of the time of year where we get solicited, or you all get solicited to put your support behind things. And we've had a couple of them come in. And my general statement to you guys, and you probably saw it in emails recently, is, while some things may seem like, oh, gosh, yeah, that sounds like a great idea, I always like to check with our resources, with CML, just to see what, what things were not being told about a certain initiative, or if there are, you know, in the case, there was something came up recently about water, so I talked, I contacted our water attorney and chatted. But these letters where we've been asked to support, I have vetted them along those, along the thread, and so, just want to get some direction from you all on that. So the first was a request to sign on to a letter where, basically asking the BLM to provide two things. A, a longer public comment period, and secondly, a rebuttal of their assessment that an analysis regarding the federal coal leasing program doesn't have any significant impacts, which, which mean environmental impacts in part. Apparently, back in 2016, there was a decision for the Department of the Interior to do a review of the federal coal program and the leases associated with it, and the environmental and fiscal impacts. And as a result, because they sort of predicted what some of the outcomes might be environmentally, they put a moratorium on any new leases. Well, fast forward to 2017, under the current administration, they terminated that moratorium. And they did not disclose any of the, the coal programs' environmental or climate impacts as part of that. And so, basically, when they came up, came out with the finding, they allowed for the public on an environmental assessment, 15 days to comment. Which normally, like, if you remember when we had the, the comment period up the frying pan for the, the logging operation up there, that was something like 90 days or something along those lines. So it really gave us a chance to chew on it, bring it back to, you know, councils and their schedules and whatnot. So, basically, this is trying to challenge their 15-day comment period, ask for a longer comment period, and to rebut the environmental assessment that was released, saying that there was no significant findings. So, if you so wish, I would, on your behalf, submit a support for this letter.
Questions or motion?
Pardon me?
Yes, sir.
Jackie. So, there's one other piece to this, which is that, over the years, coal mines have, have leased BLM land, government land, public land, to get the coal and to sell it. And that, those leases are at a very, very, very low rate. And so, this is your coal, it's the people's coal. And part of this pause was to say, what's the right rate? What's it worth? And what are the economic costs, the externalities to it? So this is, you know, it's partly an environmental issue, but it's partly a justice and an equity, and a, what is the people's resource worth? So I make a motion that we sign this as, as a town.
And did you have anything else you wanted to add to the letter, based on what you're saying?
It, it, you touch on that, it touches on that in there. I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that.
Okay. So, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
For the discussion?
I just have a question. You guys wrote it. Did you guys write it, or is this like a boilerplate, almost?
Boilerplate, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
But it looks like you've made some changes also.
That's just my speech.
Oh, your speech. Oh, sorry. Okay. Sorry.
So I don't fumble.
Didn't mean to call you on that. Okay. So we have, we have a motion and a second. Are you okay with it, as is?
I am. It just, it's so lengthy describing, to get to the point, that, you know, a reader, like, it would be good to have, like, the punch up front. But if it's boilerplate, it's boilerplate.
Well, but why don't we have a summary, executive summary at the first paragraph, just so you say what we want? We oppose, we oppose lifting this.
That's a really good idea.
And, and longer comment period.
Yep. Like that. So we have a motion and a second, little changey's in there. Anybody else? Or are we ready? On favor? Opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Ryan.
Sure. Okay, second one. So, Councilor Infante had forwarded me, and I believe several of you probably received, a request from a nonprofit organization called Co-Perg, and it's a Denver-based. What's it, what is it saying for?
Colorado Public Interest Group.
Research Group.
Research Group.
Okay. So. Okay. So, um, basically, what, what, um, they were asking is for council members to sign on individually, um, to advocate for, uh, continued expansion, um, of the Bus Hang service, and, um, they went through and they talked about what, you know, Bus Hang had, had done, and their expansions, um, Bill had asked a couple of questions, like, well, are we already, um, you know, paying for this through RFTA, um, and it looks like it is a CDOT program, and then CDOT contracts with a private vendor to provide the service. Um, there, um, as far as, um, service out of the valley, you, you know, you take, uh, the transit line from anywhere in the valley, and there's two locations in Glenwood Springs that you can pick it up and, and take it, uh, uh, over to Denver, and it does go to, um, Glenwood, or to, um, um, West?
Grand Junction.
Grand Junction, thank you, gosh. Um, and so you can, you can take it in that direction as well. Um, and then, uh, something about the cost, and I think, you know, I looked it up, I think it was about $42, if, if you were taking it over to, to Denver from, um, from Glenwood. So, uh, basically, I did contact, um, one of the, one of the red flags that always goes up for me, when people are, are asking for support, support doesn't come for free, and so, um, I called CML just to ask about, you know, what, what do you know about, um, the group, and, and Bus Hang, and the source of money they might be asking for, um, and, because I'm always worried, usually municipalities get on the chopping block first, um, and, uh, it, he didn't seem to think that it was an issue, and in fact, um, with the new governor, the, the new CDOT director is going around, um, the state on a listening tour right now, and one of, um, her initiatives is alternative transportation, and really trying to expand that, and try to find solutions, and so, um, it looks like, um, this one, I also, by the way, called RFTA and had a conversation with Dan, he reviewed it, and didn't know, no red flags went up for him, either, so, um, so basically, this is more of a, um, you know, I think I could probably respond to them as the entire, on behalf of the entire council, or if you all would like to do it individually, that's also fine, but, um, just thought I'd bring it to everybody, for you to chew on a little.
Um, I would support this. Bus Hang, I know a lot of people who use it, and so, I'd be happy for council to, or to direct Ryan to have council write all overall thing, the more cars you can take off the road, and the more opportunities you have to get to Denver.
Yeah, I, I have used Bus Hang, and I think, one of the things that's, it's not wrong with Bus Hang, it's just like, they should have done some expansions by now, because it's still what it was on day one, which is, you can get on the bus in Glenwood Springs at eight o'clock, let's say...
Seven twenty-five.
And you can come back, and be back home at nine or 11:00 at night, and that's your only choices, so it's, it's not as usable as it could be, you know, it's been a long time since CDOT was the Department of Transportation, or of highways, it's supposed to be transportation, let's ramp it up, so people can use it, for God's sake.
Well, why don't we just add, add to it, and just say, we'd like, we'd support Bus Hang, but also to expand Bus Hang.
And, and I think that was, so, and, if you all want me to try to do that, that's great, it, it did seem like, um...
It might have said that.
Signing on, they just wanted to add your name to their form letter, once again, um, but I could always add a little note to, um, to Margot, the, the woman that, that represents them, and, and advocate for more expansion, and I, and I think that's sort of what their, what their whole point is, is, is to try to increase the options.
Any other discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion that, um, council sign on to the letter for support of Bus Hang.
Second.
Great. Further discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Great, okay, and then, the third letter, then I'm done with the letter part. Um, so I received a letter just yesterday from RFTA, from, uh, David Johnson, um, and they're looking for, uh, the mayor to sign a support letter, um, for a grant they're, uh, chasing down, so, it's a Build Grant Program, and Build stands for Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development, it's a federal grant program, I believe, and, basically, what they'd use the money for is to renovate the, um, maintenance facility down in Glenwood. Um, the current maintenance facility is built in 2002, meant to house 30 buses, um, today, they have about 45 buses, um, they're trying to bring it up to a capacity of, of 60 buses, and with the, with the buses, apparently, over time, they've become, um, sort of more sophisticated, they're bringing on the electric buses, so they have more equipment needs as well, associated with it. They have about $15 million now, to go toward it, they were, um, depending on, or, or would have used, um, additional funding that would have come through the Destination 2040 Plan that failed, um, at the ballot last, um, last fall, that was, uh, 7A, um, so they've gone back to the drawing board, and they've asked for money from, um, the Federal Transit Administration before, um, but, uh, they were asking for larger sums, $22 million, so, they, they asked for some feedback, why, you know, why aren't we getting the grant? And the feedback was, well, ask for a lesser amount, um, so they're asking for 8 million, and, um, and then also, get letters of support from, you know, your regional partners, so that's part of what they're doing.
Susan, are you trying to speak?
No, I just meant that, I think you said that 20, the Destination 2040 failed, you really meant the state ballot language failed on the 7A, that's the ballot language that...
Yes, yes, thank you, yeah, thanks for that.
I mean, this is just a consent item, normally...
Yeah, but I just got it yesterday, it was too late to put it on, so I, I just want to know...
They need it now.
They need it now, and if you guys, um, uh...
They're not asking us for money, they're just asking us for support.
Nope, they just want support.
Anybody have questions or a motion?
I make a motion that we support RFTA.
This thing.
And this item.
So we'll have that for you to sign there.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, was there a second? I'll second it.
I seconded it.
Thank you, Roger.
I knew I heard it.
No, I didn't hear it.
Um, and then just, um, two more updates, um, because I know we're getting on in time, but, um, Sunday Market, uh, that starts this Sunday, for the first one, um, of the year, so, come out and join that, um, and then also Saturday is the Receding Project, um, that, um, Ring Fork Outdoor, Outdoor Volunteers, um, is putting on, and so, gosh, last I talked to Kathy last week, there was something like 200 volunteers, so, there's probably more now. One of the, um, interesting, um, things to note is, as part of the watershed protection, um, program that we're, um, we are, um, uh, doing, um, for mudslides, uh, this project, we figured out a way for it to count toward in-kind, and so that helps reduce the overall burden for what would normally be placed on the local, um, residents, and so, um, the more people we get, it's like $14 an hour per volunteer that we get to count toward it, so, pretty slick deal. Um, and so, um, so that's Saturday, and then lastly, um, you know, Greg mentioned, we've had the, the mud and flood, we've had a couple meetings, uh, just in the last few weeks, and, um, one of the final things, you know, it's, it's, it's all well and good that we're, we're, uh, trying to mitigate and put in the verms and things like that, to protect people's homes, um, but the, um, warning system is one of the most important things, and, um, we are working with Eagle County, they've taken the lead on this piece, but, um, to get, um, rain gauges placed up on Basalt Mountain. Apparently, the weather patterns on Basalt Mountain, um, if you go from the north to the south, are completely and totally different, um, in the mountain regions also, there's, um, it's, the radar, it's difficult to kind of pick up accurately, um, what the weather is doing, and so, these rain gauges, um, that will be monitored, um, by the USGS, um, uh, they'll come and install them, they'll monitor them, um, and, uh, basically, they'll be able to tell, uh, and inform people, it'll go out on Pick and Alerts, if there's an issue, you know, likely, for chance of a, of a flood, um, and, uh, so it looks like, um, the, there was a $18,000 delta that, um, needed to be made up, to be able to get these. The Fire, um, uh, Department, or the Fire District, committed to taking half of that, and, um, this was sort of last night, and I said, yeah, whatever, we'll, we'll pay for the 9,000, we'll find it, um, a couple possible sources, um, for that is, A, kind of going around, passing the hat to the other counties, Garfield, um, Pick and County, we both benefit from this as well, um, but, just as far as getting the project moving, um, you know, I, I was willing to say, yeah, let's pay $9,000, so, just wanted to let you guys know, in case you hear about that, um, and, we want to get that up before monsoon, so that's the hurry, is to get it up there on, by July, so, that's it.
Wow, nothing more?
That's it.
Oh, sorry, thank you, that was all pretty interesting stuff. Okay, now, we're gonna have a real council meeting here.
All right.
And our first item is leash laws, off-leash areas, um, and who's got that?
So Greg and I are gonna sort of tag-team on this, I'll maybe introduce it, and then Greg's been, um, dealing with it for longer than I, because, um, he has a, a memo dating back a couple of years, that was included in your packet. Um, so the town of Basalt, right now, has a, um, has a leash law, and, um, it is, um, just not strictly enforced, and, um, basically, if, I've seen one thing in the small Colorado communities I've worked in, um, it's that each and every community kind of struggles with, how do you, how do you enforce it, um, because in Colorado, people love their dogs, and, um, and so, uh, that's what we're attempting to do, I think we've just reached a point where we're getting enough feedback and concern about, um, dog bites, uh, whether it be dog on dog, or, or dog on person, um, that we thought we'd, we'd bring it back to the council. Um, we, of course, didn't bring a blank sheet of paper, um, with us, we had a suggestion, um, for council to consider, and, um, this was actually not in your, um, in your packet, uh, but Susan, uh, did point out to me, um, that the post-master plan, it does align with, um, what we are suggesting, and so, um, essentially, we, we don't think that creating a bunch of fenced dog parks is a, is a great idea, it's expensive, they tend to get, um, uh, you know, pretty confined, and, um, instead, what we were thinking is that, we would have a general, um, uh, leash law that we would enforce in, uh, throughout town, and we would designate a few places where, uh, people could run their dogs off-leash, essentially, they'd be under, um, voice command, as good as that, but, there, there are places now, that people, um, um, are, uh, running their dogs, so we have, Albany Park is a place where people gather in the morning, and evening on the big field there, and run their dogs, um, the South Side Park, uh, is another one of those, and then there's a section of, of Linear Park, um, sort of on the north end of Linear Park, closer towards Willetts Town Center, um, that kind of has a long, um, uh, stretch of grass, um, where dogs could run, uh, and, there's a road that then separates them from the area where the, the, um, the play structure is, and where you have a lot of kids running around and such, so, um, you know, a, a chief had thrown out a couple ideas of how, um, he dealt with this in the past, and sort of, as far as education, and, you know, buying, you know, a number, like, buying a bunch of leashes, and, you know, passing them out to people, and really kind of taking a, a community policing, uh, standpoint, just to educate folks for a time, um, and, uh, and talk about it, and then, eventually, in the short term, start to be, um, to, to enforce it more strictly, so, um, Chief, you want to talk a little bit about your, your memos, and, and...
Sure, so the memos, excuse me, date back to 2012, and it's just numbers, numbers of dog-at-large calls, numbers of dog bites, with dogs being on leash or off-leash, and biting, and then, if it was dog-on-dog attack versus dog-on-person attack, so, since January 1, 2012, and I updated these numbers to yesterday, so there's not a third memo, this has been going on since 2016, this conversation, and the first memo, um, so bites, off-leash, 68, on-leash, 18. Of those, there was 46 dog-on-dog attacks, and 40 dog-on-person attacks, and over that time period, 120, 1,028 dog-at-large calls for service that have come into our, our office, so, it's, it's a balancing act of, dogs need to have places to run, they need to, you know, be able to exercise, people want it, want that, but then, the other side of it is pedestrians, families with younger kids, people who are afraid of dogs, or dogs that they, or people that have been bit previously, they want the dog on a leash in areas where they frequent, too, so, it's kind of that balance, and I think, with, with conversations with Ryan, and with planning of, looking at areas where it's, it's a off-leash area, without fences, just a couple signs that say you can run your dogs off-leash here, but once you leave that, we need you to have them on a leash, to help, you know, curtail dog bites, or, or dogs at large, um, I think it's, it's a good balance, no one's wanting to do total strict 100% enforcement, where a dog has to be on the leash at all times, so I think this is a good compromise of how we can try and address the issues and the concerns that we're hearing from community members.
So can I ask a quick question? So is, okay, this is, this thing we've got in front of us, is the original, or the ordinance we have in place right now?
Oh yes, yes, I did include the ordinance in there.
Okay, so, and so how would language be included in here?
I, I don't think we're changing the ordinance, or we're not looking to do that.
Oh, we're not going to change it.
We're looking to, to just provide areas that dogs could be off-leash, and I think that could be an administrative action, or direction from council, um, while still enforcing the 10-foot leash law in all other areas of town.
Okay, but does it say in the ordinance, there are places where this doesn't apply? Where the ordinance doesn't apply?
It doesn't.
Yeah, I, I don't think it does, I think if there is a, if a code amendment is needed, it would be to provide the authority to designate places that could be off-leash areas, so, I can review that with the chief, and if there needs to be a code amendment, we would.
I mean, I would like something to say, we have a minor change here, or something, you know, because otherwise, this is the code.
Right.
Yeah.
We just did this in Pick and County, and you do have to revise.
Right.
Yeah, we need to revise it, and then, you have to, um, you know, create the areas where you could put your dogs off-leash, even though if you designate, council can declare them, they still have to vote to declare it, I mean, we still have to actually formally declare them.
So, we'll review to a code amendment, and ensure that the proper authorities are in place to kind of enact what it is that council wishes, in terms of no leash areas, yeah.
That's good, the timing's perfect, that you just did this. Um, anybody, yeah?
I have a question, since we're now moving towards a world in which we're going to start enforcing our leash law, and we need to get that out to our community, can we create some signage that's maybe at the doggy pots, that say, you know, we have a leash law, and we are enforcing it, and, and let people know that this is a thing, and they will be punished if they don't?
Excellent idea.
It is a good idea.
Are you taking that with you?
Not just yet.
We, we can do those signs, but not till 2020.
That was so efficient of you all.
Because we have to, we have to order them, you know, and then they'll be in the budget somewhat.
We should have ordered them eight years ago, and we didn't know, you know.
Yeah. How's, yes?
Uh, there's, I feel one other location that dog people frequent, and that is the Basalt River Park, there are a lot of people that work at Ski Cove, Ski Cove is a dog-friendly workplace, the, they go out and they run and play fetch over there, um, from the area, RMI, um, and I also see, um, there's not a playground there, it seems like a, a safer, less dog, children.
The only, the only comment I would, I would have to that is, today, that's true, um, as we develop the park, that might change, so in the code, if we're de-designating specific places, um, we might think about that, but in the code, if we're being a little more vague, and are able to administratively, um, do, you know, designate places, then that, then that, um, might work, but, you know, today, you're right.
Or, or maybe in the language, you could say, these places and/or places that are posted, okay, or something, so, you can, so you can be specific, like Gary's saying, because I think you've got to have to be somewhat specific in a code amendment, but then, but say something about posting.
It's, yeah, there's two different things, yeah.
Right, so, I mean, one, it's, um, we'll look at whether or not, and to what extent, the specific places need to be identified, and then also, that were part of creating the authority to, um, to then designate what areas can be off-leash areas.
Okay, well, anyway, you've got this stuff covered, it's your job.
I have a question for Gary, on the Pick and County open space, um, defining, um, a dog, the dog-free areas, like Jaffe Park, and what is the definition of voice command, and what are... are the, what are the slaps on the wrist to fines?
It's specifically listed out in our regulations what voice and sight control is.
Okay.
And so, if we're going to go that way, I would say, you know, we should have some type of voice and sight control, because, you know, that helps you. If the dog's completely out of control, even in an off-leash area, you'll have some authority to say, well, that's not under their voice or sight control, so at least you can deal with it in that way, shape, or form.
Maybe the county, we could get the, look at the counties, since they just did it.
It's, well, I looked at the, the code in Basalt is different
Right.
than the county's code. But basically, you would just be adding something to Basalt Code to give the council authority to declare places off-leash if they choose to do so.
Right.
And then, we'd want a different thing to say, you know, that we declare Albany Park.
You might do that by resolution then, or something like that.
Right.
You honestly don't want it in the code.
Yeah.
No, no, you have to change the code. You have to change, you have to change this or this whole code to allow it. But you don't need to do it. You just need to, oh, we need to define it, so it can be by resolution, most likely. But you have to make sure it is, because you, you're, he needs to know that, like, these are the areas where you can and cannot do that.
Right.
So, anyway.
You know, could we stop here in the middle? There is a woman that wants to make a comment regarding this. Come on up if you want to make a comment. We are.
My name is Ellen Weinstein. I live in Willets, and I'm speaking as a dog person, not anti-dogs. So, dog leash laws exist for a reason. They help maintain a safe and respectful environment for dogs and people, including but not limited to children who are afraid, elderly with mobility imbalance issues, people with disabilities, and dogs on leashes who do not like being charged by other dogs. I'm not sure why the police have been instructed not to enforce the leash laws. I don't think council would have them not enforce stop signs or speed limits. Enforcement of, quote, nuisance laws such as leash laws actually tends to make better relations among members of the community. A large number of professional dog-related organizations, publications, and owner groups state the importance of leashes when a dog is off its own property, no matter how well-trained. As a resident of Willets and a taxpayer, and having a dog that is not unfriendly, but does not like having loose dogs run up to her and get in her face, I would like to be able to walk in the neighborhood or the park without having to continually be on the defensive against off-leash dogs. It's not enjoyable, to say the least, to walk continually worrying about fending off other dogs, potentially having to break up a dogfight, or lose my balance, or slip on ice in the winter. I don't want any person or dog getting hurt. When I, I live across from the park, and when I've been out, I've witnessed numerous potentially tragic interactions. Your statistics may be underestimated, because some incidents don't get reported. I, myself, have taken one dog to the emergency center with a ripped ear from an attack by an off-leash dog, another that got hit by a car running across Valley Road. That could also potentially cause a car accident and injury to people involved. My neighbors have young children. The daughter, the young daughter is six years old. She's afraid of dogs. One ran up to her, and the owner actually yelled at the daughter for running from the dog. And the mother, when she told him to leash his dog, he said she was totally ignored. She also tells me the people in our brand-new, expensive playground are so busy watching their kids, they don't pay attention to the off-leash dogs that pee on the playground equipment or poop off to the sides. And it's now the whole park is being used as a dog park. People just drive up, they get out of their cars, the dogs are off-leash, they run into the valley, and even into the road. They have their frisbees and tennis balls, and obviously are there with the express purpose of playing with the dogs. A leashed dog having an unleashed dog rushing up to it unwanted, it can be a stressful event to the dog, can set back training and socialization. People often, yes, the people who call their dog, they go, it's fine. It's not fine. Often, the dog doesn't listen, and no matter how well-trained the dog is, it's still a dog. No dog has 100% recall, nor can the owner predict 100% of the time how the dog will react in a greeting. More minute? In summary, I would note that dogs off-leash and on-leash areas have potential to have a significant effect on others. A leash law exists for safety and keeping the peace, preventing car accidents, bike and skateboard accidents, getting injured by, people getting injured by dogs, dog bites, dog fights, dogs being hit by a car or hurt. So I know this may be unpopular, but I respectfully request the police officers not be prevented from enforcing the leash law. I believe a few warnings and maybe a few tickets, people will get the message. They will learn. There is a sign that says leash law strictly enforced. They'll learn that it's not a joke. And I don't object at all to areas that are safe and appropriate for those who desire to have their dogs off-leash. But everywhere is not that place.
Thank you very much. Well spoken. Okay. Okay, so, is the suggestion that we noodle this, bring it back?
Yeah, we'll bring it, bring it back. I think we have enough direction unless there's any more comments.
I just have a question. What is the consequence?
I'm sorry?
What's the consequence when a human is caught without their dog on a leash?
So it's in, it's in the fine schedule.
It is in the code.
Oh, I just didn't see the fines.
It's probably, I think it's, I'm going to say it, and then I'll keep looking, but I think it's our normal one of, pardon me?
It's in a separate piece schedule.
No, I know. But it's up to $2,500.
$2,680 if you're, if the judge summons.
Okay, so it actually has a stick?
Uh-huh.
Nice.
I mean, usually, people don't get fined. It allows the, you know, the judge makes that determination, depending. But if somebody got four dog tickets, then he might get a little more serious with the fines. So, okay.
So, did you have something to add?
I was just going to clarify that the, for, if you have your dog off-leash and dog running at large ticket.
I get a $2,600 ticket.
And you get a ticket. It's going to be, it's going to be, begin at a relatively low fine amount, and it's set out in the fine schedule that has been adopted. And then that can escalate if there's repeat occurrences. If there are so many repeat occurrences, rather than there be a fine written on the ticket, it'll be written as a summons into the, into court, whether that is then more discretion with, of the prosecutor and the judge in entering what that fine amount would be.
Any more questions, or can we get a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I'd just like to make an observation that we have a human playing fetch with her dog right outside this meeting right here.
Write her a ticket.
And, just thinking about the locations, I think that there, the ratio of amount of space per neighborhood, and I have a little bit of concern in Willets, that that one section of Linear Park is where dogs can go off-leash. Looking at, there's a lot of people that live in the townhomes that we own, that the town owns a couple of, and they frequent the rugby field. Rugby field's huge. Maybe that's another opportunity place. Just want to put it out there of...
I think the one reason we kept them off of the rugby field, and somebody might know the history better than me, is just that we have people there and dogs poop, you know.
Yeah, there's a sign there that says, don't do this, because there are children, and people don't pick up. Which is another thing, is there, in our code, something about when dogs aren't cleaned up after, and that punishment? Because that's like...
DNA testing.
What?
You can do DNA testing.
Right. But I'm just saying, because that's what I experienced.
The issue is, is when we, when we see something like that, and we stop and look at them, they pick it up.
Yeah.
But it's when we're not there.
Exactly.
So, that's, that's that balance. And the responsible ownership is what that comes back to. But we do tell people, you know, pick them up. We place those, those bag stations all over the place, so.
You'd be amazed to how, you know, hard it is to get a poop ticket, because as soon as a ranger shows up, that person's picking up poop.
Right.
I mean, I think we've issued about four poop tickets in over 15 years.
Okay, can we move on? I would, I would wonder if there could be a motion to draft an amendment to the leash law to address locations for dogs to be off-leash.
Do we need a motion? Can I just?
Let's have a motion, so we have a direction. Somebody.
A motion for what you just said.
Okay.
Second.
Further discussion?
Just one, one item. Jen's comment about, you know, the different areas. I think this is like a starting point, you know? So I think, I think it allows us to come up. And I think there's, there's a lot of people that are, that I see walking their dogs on the leash, so they may or may not, you know, choose to use that. But I do want to be a little cautious for, you know, we just heard from a citizen that as they're, as they're, you know, if there's predictability as to where the dogs can be off-leash, it allows those folks who, who don't want to be around those dogs to avoid that area.
Right, exactly.
And so, you know, I think, you know, it's kind of, I see it as baby steps at first, and, you know, whatever direction we ultimately get from you guys. But that's just sort of my answer to your comment.
So we have a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? All right.
Thank you.
That could have been worse.
It was worse.
Oh, sorry. I think you're funny, Aden. What did I say? Okay.
Aden is the one person here without a dog. And Ryan.
I had one.
Ryan had one. He killed it.
I did.
He didn't. Okay. So I guess some things can't be joked about. The next item is something about the census, the 2020 census presentation.
So, just really quickly, and I think Watkins will do a presentation. We're going to have a slightly abbreviated presentation. Is that correct?
Even, even the newspaper's leaving, so you know it's going to get bad.
Couldn't leave fast enough.
He's running. Sprinting.
We did try to get somebody from the census, and they were, they were unable to make it tonight. So we'll reschedule that as, as time allows, so.
In lieu of that, though, I was going to talk really...
Yet another hat and another award.
Well, don't compliment too soon. But to talk briefly about the census, some things that you already know, I'm sure. I thought I'd talk first about what the census is. It's a mandated function, the federal government mandated by the Constitution. Every 10 years, we have to count every person living in the country. So that's every person, regardless of age, regardless of citizenship, regardless of how long you've lived in a particular place. So, quite an undertaking, obviously. And by most accounts, the Census Bureau and the Census 2020 is underfunded. And so, that's why there's been such a push to get involvement at the local level, which I'm going to talk about here in a second. Why is the census important? For reasons you already know. We want to ensure equal representation in Congress, and we want to have the opportunity to have access to our fair share of federal funding for numerous programs, you know, including infrastructure here. So what are we doing here in the Roaring Fork Valley? We're working with our neighboring jurisdictions, especially Picken County and Aspen, who have taken a lead in putting together what's called a complete count committee, or CCC. This is something that most jurisdictions do around the country. And the Census Bureau encourages it and offers support in every way that they can. So this is going to be a Roaring Fork Valley-wide CCC. There's also one in the Eagle Valley, and I'm staying in touch with them through email. We haven't attended any meetings, and we're not planning to at this point, but we are staying in contact. And so what the CCC is doing is identifying hard-to-count populations. That's the bulk of the effort in the census, is trying to find these people who wouldn't ordinarily respond for various reasons. People who don't speak English very well, seasonal workers, migrant workers, very young people, babies can't fill out forms, they need someone to do it for them. And so we've started making this list of people, and in order to encourage the participation of these hard-to-count populations, we're relying on what we're calling trusted messengers. So we're reaching out, trying to identify companies that employ a lot of people, anyone really who's, you know, a voice of influence and is active in the community. And so this is an opportunity for you all as council as well to give input on this, I think. We're making a kind of a list, a spreadsheet, and we're hoping to have a big meeting in July, a date that hasn't been determined yet, to bring all these potential partners together, and so that we can kind of give them information, answer questions proactively on behalf of these hard-to-reach people. And so the role of the CCC is really to just provide information to help people participate in the census. That's the goal of this. The Census Bureau, although they're not here tonight, I think they would, they would like it if we could put a link on our website about census jobs. They have numerous job opportunities that, you know, people can go in door-to-door, can be organizing and all that. To put that on our website, to advertise for that, I think they'd appreciate that. And I don't have anything else for you all, but I'm happy to take questions. And if it's a question I can't answer, I can track it down for you guys.
So have you talked to the person or type of person who might come present?
Yes.
So that's still a plan, a broader PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am.
Or something like that?
Yep. And, you know, maybe you could let me know how much detail and any particular topics you all would like to hear about?
One of the things that Susan and I brainstormed about a little bit with regard to the timing, you know, we wanted to just kind of kick it off with just some basic information, so you all knew it was coming. But maybe bring a person back as it's becoming more, you know, closer to census time.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So that it's, you know, people are, you know, timely, and like, it's time to start, you know, giving, you know, your information, filling out, you know, whatever, just so that we can start building the interest.
And census time, I don't think I mentioned this, census day is April 1, 2020.
Oh, so let's not start talking about it every day, okay?
It's 10 months away.
I'll be here before you know it.
And many of you guys actually met Mark, who was at the open house for the master plan, and he was really excited to be there, and it just didn't work out.
He was so excited.
Yeah. He was so excited, he was excited to make a presentation to you guys, and somehow it didn't work for tonight, but...
April 2020. Guess what else happens then?
Election. Town of Basalt election.
We'll be gone.
Okay, thank you. Good job.
Yes, the only addendum, there was a presentation at the last Northwest COG meeting, and there is a very, very significant grassroots mobilization effort. But the, the point that they were pressing for us in Colorado is the importance for Colorado in this sentence, because the belief is, we have grown faster than other states, and we could very comfortably pick up a congressional seat.
Right.
And the congressional seat will likely see a division of District 3, which means we won't have this colossal district. It will be divided and probably better represent us, I think.
That would be nice.
So.
I think that's, I think the guy that was at the, the other night at Rocky Mountain Institute, I think he was saying that. So, yeah, thanks. Okay, thank you. Unless anybody has questions? All right.
Do we have this on our website?
Why not?
Sure. Yeah. Normally, we talked about this. Normally, we don't put post-people's jobs on there.
Oh.
But Pam and I were talking through it, and because this is a bit different, you know, it's, you know, for the public good in the sense of representation, and it's essentially a fellow government. We felt comfortable, but we did want to just make sure you guys had that same level of comfort.
Yeah.
Because normally, it's just nonprofits and the local agencies that we post.
Does anybody have a problem with it?
Census is important.
Thanks. Okay, finally, public hearing and second reading of Ordinance 12 and Ordinance of the Town, establishing the Basalt Green Team as a formal advisory board to the Town Council.
Susan, this is a public hearing and a second reading. I went into more detail at the first meeting. This is just the formalization of the Green Team. And the intent is that the bylaws for the three organizations match as closely as possible to each other. And so on that note, I'm going to point out that the second sentence on your Exhibit A under member guidelines should read, "Green Team members shall not present themselves as a representative of the town in any matter of private or public." And that was the language that we had incorporated for the final. So, I'd like you to, just after the public hearing... So, I'd like you to just, after the public hearing, approve it on the second reading with.
As amended or whatever. Okay. This is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing now, 7:33. Anybody in the public have a comment regarding this closed public hearing? Council, questions?
May I remove the town council approval ordinance number 12, served 2019 on the second reading?
Sir, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dismissed, adjourned. Thank you, everybody.